Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Tuesday, September 15 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us in person. Those of you joining us online, thank you for doing that. We'll go ahead and get started tonight by reading our roll, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Recky.
Here.
Erickson. Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nitzer.
Here.
All right. I know Council Erickson will be here shortly. She's running a little late. Before we get to our invocation, I want to recognize the Boy Scout troop that's with us today, PAC 346, right? So, welcome, guys. It'll be about a four-hour meeting, so we'll see you at the end, all right? Stick with us. And tonight, to give our invocation, is a great man, Pastor Kirk Flah. He's with Abiding Savior Free Lutheran Church. I go to Haiti once a year, and usually Pastor Kirk is with me, or as we call him, PK, and he's just a good man with a great heart. And honored to have you here, PK. So, to give our invocation, I'd ask that you rise for that and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
And I hate to burst the Cub Scouts' bubble, but Mayor Tanaken said four hours. He forgot that I'm doing the invocation and prayer. That's another half hour at least, so we're looking at four and a half. So, just be aware. No, in all seriousness, I do, again, I say this, and probably sound like a broken record, but we, as a clergy community, wanted to say how much we appreciate the privilege of coming down and to be able to pray. This isn't possible in all places. We're really grateful for the freedom that we have to come and to share and to recognize. I believe that prayer is one of the greatest works that we can be involved in, and the blessing that that is. And the text I wanted to read tonight was maybe a little bit not odd, but it's an interesting text. It's from Ezra, Chapter 6, verse 10 and 11, actually, verse 10 is the main one. And it's interesting, this was a time of rebuilding in Jerusalem, and the king of Persia had given an edict to allow the Jews to rebuild both the wall, or the temple, rather, and this was part of that. And I thought it was an interesting text. They wanted the temple rebuilt, and then the king had said that "they," meaning the people, "that they may offer acceptable sacrifices to the God of heaven and pray for the life of the king and his sons." And again, I recognize we're not talking about kings and all that here tonight, but we are talking, I think, here the principle of the importance of praying for our leaders. And we really count that a privilege and a joy to have you, men and women, serving. And I know that this season has been a very trying one in many ways, but I just respect each and every one of you for your work and the decisions, and are grateful to support you in and through prayer. Lord, I thank you for the opportunity to gather this night, and going to continue to pray for this leadership team that you have assembled here in Sioux Falls. We live in a great city, and, Lord, we are served by great leaders. I thank you for our mayor. I thank you for our city council members. I thank you for all who lead and protect us. I thank you, too, tonight, for the men and women of uniform that defend us and protect us. And I am grateful, Lord, for all those on the front lines of the battle with COVID. I thank you for them as well. And we would ask, Lord, your continued protection over our city, our state, and our nation. We would pray, God, that you would remove the divisiveness that is so pervasive today, and that, Lord God, your peace would prevail. Guide this group tonight in all their decisions. We ask, God, for your will to be accomplished. And again, we give thanks. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to point out that we, as you see, we have a POW MIA flag displayed for our meeting tonight, and that's in observance of POW MIA Recognition Week. And so, I'd ask that you take time this week to reflect on the sacrifices of our men and women of the military, and specifically, the American POWs, and those who still remain missing in action. With that, we'll get started with the meat of our agenda. Start with item number five, which is our consent agenda. Look for changes or motions to that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilor Starr.
Thank you. I'd like to pull item number 26, or subitem number 26. I apologize.
All right. Any other changes, Council? All right, look for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Kylie and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move on to item 19. It's our regular agenda. Look for a motion there.
Move approval. Nitzer.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Jensen, approve this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Nitzer.
Motion to amend by moving item 38 to immediately follow item 27, and moving item 40 to immediately follow item 28.
All right, we've got a second for that?
Second, Sale.
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Sale to rearrange those items. I need discussion there. All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
All right, we're back to the main motion as amended. Any other amendments to make? All right, seeing none, we'll vote on this, please.
Councilmember Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Recky.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We're at the general public input portion of our agenda tonight, and as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and a total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So, at this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward. For general public input, Tom, please note our time is 7:07. Come forward, please. Good evening.
How you doing? I'm Heather Pastor. Haven't been here in a while. You know, that's because I'm busy trying to live my life and do everything I need to do to keep myself from not being homeless, not being in jail, not be harassed by police officers. Oh, and by the way, right now, as it stands, I'm being accused of something that I know I did not do. I can't say a whole lot, because I do have a public defender. And good news, finally, the Human Rights is going to help me. I'm waiting for them to send me paperwork, but something I'm really getting tired of right now. Why is it the likes of people like Mark Samuel Graham or others that actually have a history of domestic violence towards people? He's supposed to pay me my civil matter right now, which he's not, not because he doesn't have money, but because he simply doesn't want to. Other people that's done other stuff, and you know what? Seriously, I called the Department of Labor again about what's going on with that, and Adam acts all friendly on the phone, but he doesn't call me back. I have, right now, I'm helping my landlord. Not only do I pay rent every month and do what I'm supposed to do, but I helped my landlord rent it out two places that I cleaned. He bumped off my rent a little bit as part of the deal. Me and James are two people that are trying to live our lives, and I'm sorry, I don't care what people think about this, the panhandles. I've seen what these people do. They get money, they go to the store, they get alcohol, they pass out, they go to detox. I'm a little defensive to that, you know? And right now, you want to know my situation? I need new shoes. I'm sleeping on an air bed that's flat. I'm being accused of something I didn't do to my fiance. I'm extremely ticked off right now. And I haven't been here in a while, but you know what? Seriously, the Human Rights is going to help me. I'm going to mention this when I go to the Human Rights. Mark Samuel Graham needs to pay me my settlement and stop driving around town harassing me. I've tried six times to get a protection order against him, and did not. They said the no-contact order was dropped. They didn't send me nothing in the mail. Now, I'm being accused of being a domestic person, my fiance, which I did not. I'm tired of the harassment. I'm tired of the Sanders. I'm tired of the lies. Me and James are two people living our lives. I'm sorry. I'm pissed. You, God bless you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Phyllis Erns, and I live in southeast Sioux Falls. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I watched last Thursday's council proceedings from the safety of my home, but because of the tone of it and the outcome, I felt compelled to come and address you personally this evening. I must say, I'm not surprised by any of it, but I'm truly dismayed by the lack of professional conduct displayed by some of you. I expect more from our counselors. I have followed the Board of Ethics this year and wonder if they have actually ever read the definition of ethics. Just because something is legal and it has been going on for a long time does not make it ethical. One has to wonder just who they are representing. Beyond that, I want to say to you that John Cunningham is one of the most moral and ethical people I know, and I've known him my entire life. I am proud to call him my brother. As I saw on Thursday evening, not everyone appreciates a person who is passionate about morality and ethics. Standing up for what is right is not always popular. The Center for Public Integrity listed South Dakota as one of the most corrupt states in the United States. In 2017, John funded an essay contest encouraging high school seniors to contemplate on how they would improve ethics in South Dakota government if they were elected governor. He had a great response, by the way. This shows that he does more than just talk about ethics. I personally have had a concern that Sioux Falls is following in the footsteps of the John Daly Chicago. The handling of this incident did nothing to convince me that I am in error with this concern. My hope is this incident will cause you to seriously decide to take a stand on real ethical conduct for officials who are elected to serve everyone in Sioux Falls. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Cunningham, 4904 Oxbow, Sioux Falls. By now, I think you realize that the political motivation argument was bogus. I understand that the defendant started using that, and I understand him using it. It's a common defensive tactic by defendants where the facts don't help them. And in this case, the facts are, he took the gift, and it was by an organization that wanted to influence him, and that's the definition of a violation. That system, method of diverting attention to attack the accuser, is a common defensive tactic. It's used in all rape cases. It's probably taught in law schools. But why the counsel? The votes are already there. You had reasons to give him a pass. We learned that it's a common practice for all of you, and you can avoid repercussions for past actions. If he's a personal friend, you don't want to face him in church or here at the office, or you want to allow this in the future. Those are all reasons for giving him a pass on that. But we've seen a counselor say that holding people to ethics is frivolous. The most knowledgeable body in this city, the Board of Ethics, has said it is not frivolous. That was completely made up. Ethics is not frivolous. Holding people to ethics is not frivolous. We've heard that a counselor say that it's disgusting to try to hold a counselor accountable for a violation of ethics ordinance. That's a very disturbing statement. This showed a total disdain for ethics. And because the majority voted with him, I infer that most of you shared some or all of those feelings, but you were wise enough not to say them out loud. But it makes the accusations against me understandable in one respect. If you can't comprehend a passion for ethics, and somebody says that they have a passion for ethics, they must be lying. And if they're lying, there must be some other reason. And since you're all politicians, the reason must be politics. So, I understand how it got there, but I don't agree, and I still don't accept that, and I object to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to see you, Mr. Mayor and city councilors. I would like to speak a little bit about what happened last week.
You state your name, sir.
Sorry, Peter Pischke, fellow Sioux Falls citizen. Last week, at the end of a four-and-a-half-hour trial, six months of back and forth, we found a counselor not guilty by a 5-2 vote. The reason that went over that very contentious night was that particular ethics ordinance was vague, and everyone does it, so what's the problem? While the counselor involved is a genuinely good man, the attitude towards ethic and a weak framework to help local government officials avoid corruption is, to many citizens like myself, worrisome. Whatever we may think of Mr. Cunningham, or that counselor, or what happened that night, this event turned out to be a dry-run experiment to see if the Ethics Board can do its job, and that our city councilors will abide by the basic ethics protecting good governance. The result turned out to be a tad alike the redo of James Comey circa 2016. Yeah, it's bad. Yeah, he's probably guilty, but why should anyone really have to get punished? This experience affirmed a dangerous weakness in our ethics, to hold city leaders in between the lines. In a mirroring of our national politics, sometimes it seems like there is little to stop the Sioux Falls leadership culture here, while good right now, from festering and its members from accepting bribes. Too often, it seems, our leadership in Sioux Falls, while good-natured people, never seem to face the consequences for their mistakes, and we only need to look at our glorious Soviet architecture of a parking ramp to know that's true. Sioux Falls is a great place. All of you seem to have your hearts in the right spot, and it's appreciated. But ethics are there to protect us when human nature inevitably follows. Hearts sour, souls go dark. Even if every one of you today is in the right, what will protect future citizens from corrupt city councilors or mayor? I ask that you please reconcile your differences and reaffirm your desire to make sure the guide rails of good government are strong and affixed. Lastly, on John Cunningham specifically, please do not attack citizens when we go above our duty and file complaints. I know it can be frustrating to you, and it could cause a lot of stress, but on our part, it often takes a lot of courage. I know that the pressure is no fun, and it feels unfair, but in total respect, you guys asked for this job of leadership positions. I know everyone in this room tonight loves Sioux Falls. This is our home, so please, our city leaders, let's take better care of it. Thank you for your remarks, my remarks, and thank you for your service.
All right, thank you.
Greetings. I'm Davis Hokitis, and like it says on the overhead, I'm here to talk about massage licensing this evening. To weigh background, we should talk a little bit about regulatory capture. That's a situation in which a regulatory agency has been captured by industry and consequently does not work for consumers. Happens all the time. We don't like it, but it happens. And for more background, we should think about licensing for a little bit. It's got some good attributes and some not-so-good ones. Helps to improve quality of service, but makes things more expensive. It's a trade-off. People need to be touched. That's just how we are. So, therapy helps that. It's a fundamental human need. For more background, we should talk about social convention for a while. Now, we're all supposed to be made in the image of likeness in God, but if you go around naked, you get arrested. So, I think there's some kind of problems going on there. And I'd like to understand what they are, but I don't get it just yet. Unlicensed massage parlors can be a problem. Part of what goes on is that therapists don't like sexual requests, and there can be stuff going on in the background, like slavery and prostitution. Got to figure out how to work with that. So, I've got some recommendations. If licensing prices people out of an industry, like poor people can't afford lawyers, you can have more than one level of license. As many things as possible should be legal, because this is a free democracy. Criminalization has its risks, so you should use it cautiously. And if we're going to, we should enforce license laws, but particularly focus on management when things are bad, and, keep it up, keep it up, and not focus so much on the victims. The victims being the so-called employees. If they're there by force, we should protect them and teach them and get them a way out and not put them in jail. So, that's why I'm really trying to focus on the management behind the particular problems. Now, for closing here, since we talked about people and being naked, I thought you might enjoy the statue I found in Italy one time. Guys really having a good time. It looks like an air guitar from ancient Italy. So, have a good evening and try to find a way to manage things well.
Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Riffle, advocate for the city of Sioux Falls, I guess. So, I'm told. I'm here for the homeless and displaced persons. I've managed to get people jobs within the last few months, and some of them got two and three jobs, and we're having some good turnouts down there. And the park behind them still needs some help. So, if you just want to, they want to know, the people at the park want to have one of you come down, or a few of you, and come talk to them and see what their needs are or what the problem is. I've got them, a lot of them, a lot more sober than they used to be. I do have good things to say about it, but I'm here also because the pedestrians that have been getting killed on our streets, the drivers are not being held accountable. So, it says in the newspaper, Carmen Quick Bear lost his life, and the driver didn't have a driver's license. That's the only thing that was said in the paper. What happened with? He is being held with driving homicidal charge of some sort. Look at Rudy Crowe. I dropped him off at 9:30. He was sober enough to cross the street, and I would not have let him go any other way than to be sober enough that he knew what he was doing. But 15 minutes after I left, I had this gut feeling, like I do with a lot of them, and by the time I got home and I heard them ambulances just wailing, and since I'm from ambulance territories, driving and nursing and all that, I knew it had to be serious. But then I was called to make the final decision, and that was rough. But the gal was no alcohol and not speeding. She was watching the kids. Well, to watch the kids, you got to watch the adults. This man stepped off the curb and got killed and broke his neck and a bunch of bones in his body. I'd like to know why aren't these drivers being at least reprimanded? Goes to maybe a little bit what Davis is saying. And I just thank you for your time tonight. I am still looking into the direction that I mentioned, what, a year ago? And I think it's gotten a little out of hand. I did have one man come up to me. He was a stranger, and he apologized to me for making my job harder on the streets, and I didn't know anything about this person. And I said, "Well, I don't even know who you are and what's the matter?" He said, "I'm the one that brought the banks into Sioux Falls." Well, that was, I knew that, but it was just a coincidence. So, I thank you for being here, but we do still need to keep working downtown.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Sheriff Bruce, Sioux Falls. What I'm going to show you is graphic, a little bit here, what's happening in Pettigrew neighborhood, neighborhood. So, we got shoes on the power line. We called the police. I'm going to tell you something. This place here is worse than Waleas. This is across from Bob Hefner's rental property to drug house. We're going to show you some fighting out here that occurred today. I have a victim's face with blood, gashed the head. People pouring water to get the blood out from her head. We have one guy arrested, and not for the assault of her, because there was a warrant. Then we have police out here today. So, I had the police out there Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and today, fighting crime. You know how long has it taken on 911 calls? Long time. Guys pinned her up in the back, gunshots coming from the back, chasing people because he has her by her head, beating the hell out of her, and blood's coming out of her mouth. We're near neighborhood. I don't know where the police is at with We're Near Neighborhood, but I will be taking over the Neighborhood Association, and I want the police there to stop the mess right there. This is worse than Pettigrew, We're Near Neighborhood. It's worse than Waleas. We have an alcohol establishment that is letting them drink inside the establishment like a bar. The police is all lined up, and they said, "What's taking you so long here? What help do you need? We're 35 policemen through the whole city. We have calls. We cannot keep up with the calls. We would like to take a break. We would like to eat lunch for 30 minutes, but we cannot. We would like to go home to our families, but we're working overtime." We're near neighborhood. The police has dropped the ball on. You cannot tell me we can't clean up this drug house across the street at 903 South Summit. I was going to show you a pimp, but I'll leave it till next week, but there's a pimp recruiting back there, and you cannot tell me that the police can't stop them and do anything about it. People want their neighborhood back. I'm going to be representing 582 properties, and we will pack this house next Tuesday.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Dennis Augen, Sioux Falls. Been a citizen here now, I guess it's five months. But I was going to, wanted to kind of add to Kristi Noem's advertising program. She's really advertising the benefits of living in South Dakota, and I wanted to add a little more detail on the benefits of living in Sioux Falls. And so, I kind of got a list, and if I don't get through them, I'll just come back another night, and we'll just finish out. But let's start with car insurance. I bought, fell off my chair, same company as Lakewood, Washington. It was like 35% of what I was paying in Lakewood. Now, that tells me that, comparatively, you're doing one heck of a good job with traffic. I mean, you're beating the whole nation. Sure, everybody's got crime, but if you only want to look at it one thing at a time, then you can make the whole city sound terrible. But looking at it in the big picture, comparable to other cities, you're doing a really good job there. Okay, that's item number one. Number two, housing prices. Wow. You're about 35, well, it can even be, could even be 20%, but what it could cost in Seattle. And if you're watching the news, you know how long it might take you to get the police there. Six weeks? Six weeks? In the CHAZ area? Wow. You're really doing pretty good. And a lot of that has to do with regulations can act to manipulate the market. So, your regulations are right to keep housing affordable. Now, number three. I've been driving around looking, and I go into some of the older neighborhoods, you know, where the smaller and older homes are. And I'm looking, and I'm going, wow. It's hard to find a bad area in Sioux Falls. It really is. The homes are well-maintained, and there's got to be a roofer in this town that's making a lot of business, because one of the things I look for when I'm looking at a house, as I've been in the real estate business for 35 years, is I look for roofs. If the roofs are taken care of, then the rest of the house probably isn't deteriorating. And I've never seen so many new roofs.
Thank you, Dennis.
So, we'll continue next week or the week after.
We'll be here. All right, anyone else tonight for general public input? All right, we'll move on to our next item, please, Tom.
The next item was subitem 26 from Contracts and Agreements.
The next item was sub item 26 from Contracts and Agreements, Planning and Development Services, Sub Recipient Agreement with the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce doing business at Sioux Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $225,000.
All right. Counselor Starr, you pulled this?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I defer to Counselor Sale. I think he wanted to do this as well. So Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. We, we both did. I think this is an agenda item. Like to have Sean Pritchard come up and give us more. It's a long document, and a lot of people had some hands in it to try and use some of the money we have available to stimulate our economy. And I look to the Director of Finance to give us a brief but detailed explanation.
Sean Pritchard, Director of Finance. Yes, I appreciate you bringing it forward for attention. A few weeks back, the CVB brought forward their budget for the, the Business Improvement District. Obviously, one of the, the main goals and objectives for the Chamber and Visitors Bureau, called Experience Sioux Falls, has been to promote Sioux Falls as a community, promote our hospitality sector as well, from which they generate most of their revenues. They've been highly impacted as a result of the pandemic. They came forward with a budget proposal that had 35% cut from the budget, approximately more than $800,000 as a result of that. That raises concerns. I think that raised concerns from several of you as council members when you heard some of that as well. For two reasons primarily. One, the viability of a key partner with the city that really is tasked with an important objective of promoting our community. But I think, secondly, the fact that it pretty much curtailed any marketing efforts that they were able to achieve in order to kind of batten down the hatches and just maintain their basic infrastructure and staffing at exactly the time when we need to be promoting our community and capitalizing on that. We are in a crisis of healthcare, but we are in a crisis somewhat of economics as well, and that's been particularly hard hit to a hospitality sector. We've talked about that in many of our monthly reports. But restaurants, bars, entertainment venues certainly, but lodging, certainly the worst of all of them. And they do represent a critical, critical infrastructure for our community, not unlike our water and wastewater infrastructure, our road infrastructure. Our lodging industry is a very important component to our community in ensuring that we have the long-term ability to be an attractive place for people to spend time, which is, which improves both our economy and the people that live here. But in that, part of that crisis, crisis creates opportunities as well. And that is the reason for bringing this agreement forward. It is to capitalize on that opportunity. But in order to do that, you have to have both capacity and a willingness to lean forward and, and take that on. As a city, we have the capacity to do that. The CARES Act provides us provisions to be able to do that. That was somewhat of the intent of, of why that was brought forward. And the agreement itself is a, a support for that willingness. So those are multiple challenges and objectives that we're looking to achieve as part of this agreement. But we're not just looking externally in terms of attracting people to Sioux Falls. We are also looking at it as, in, in terms of our own residents. This, this pandemic, yes, public healthcare was a major challenge, but it also has dramatically impacted people's physical and mental, emotional well-being. Events, I think we've kind of come to consensus for many of us, many of us who have kids in sports and so forth, how important these have been to part of our day, our daily lives from an emotional and physical and mental standpoint. The, the cancellation of the Performance Arts Series at the Washington Pavilion is just the last indicator, most recent indicator of the challenge we're going to have in promoting events here in the near term, probably over the next six months. And so we need to take that capacity to generate those events, working with our partners, Pavilion, ASM Global, and so forth. And we're having those conversations right now, leaping on this agreement to be able to capitalize and promote those, not just externally to our community, but internally to our residents as well, ensuring that they are getting out in the challenging months ahead, and ensuring that we, we continue to promote that health and wellness for our community. So those are the objectives we are looking to address with this agreement.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Sean. Would you like to make a motion to approve this item?
Actually, I'd just add a couple more questions before he sits, before the Director sits down.
You did a nice job of telling the need, but specifically, out of the $250,000 that we intend to invest with the, the CVB, how will we measure it? How, what specific events are they? I, I think we were all on board of, of doing something. I mean, that's exactly what the CARES Act funds are to be used for. Give me the, the dynamics of how that money will be invested and what we expect to see with results.
Specifically, and one, one of the nice things about the, the Convention and Visitors Bureau is they, they do an excellent job. We've been in discussions with them in terms of promotional campaigns and so forth, but they're able to utilize their digital resources to track in order, being able to track people, whether they're booking rooms or not, how long they're staying on their site, where those site hits are coming from. We just had a conversation today. We're, you know, seeing long hits coming from Denver, and people are looking for opportunities to, to get out and to visit that community. So those will be some of the metrics that we look at as, as part of this. And as terms of events, we're working through that as we speak, and, and hope to have, be bringing forward some of that conceptually here over the next several weeks.
So is there a reporting mechanism that's part of the contract that will show the goals and then report back with what they did have happen, rather than, I mean, a, a specific report that comes back? Or how will you, how will we measure the success of investing these funds?
I, I wouldn't say we specifically address that as part of the agreement, but I don't perceive that being a challenge. We did that as part of kind of our Spark Initiative, and they were able to bring forward that data. I think that's something that we could bring forward in, in the spring as well, to help support kind of how these dollars were utilized and what the return on investment was.
Thank you, Director Pritchard. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Sean while he's up here? All right. Look for a motion on this one.
Move Approval Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion here?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Jensen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to shed light on the end of public testimony tonight. One of our new, newest members in the city of Sioux Falls has said it very well. Sioux Falls and South Dakota is open for business. I think we're open for business in a safe way, and we have to make certain that we do that. And I think that this is a way that we can have a public partnership, a public-private partnership, and really advertise our great city that we have right now, and help a community, our, our private community in our hospitality industry. I think this is the perfect thing to do, and I'm glad we're going to be voting on this, and, and I would encourage your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this one?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
I apologize. Did I miss public input before we made the motion? Did we ask if there was anyone that had?
No, we did not.
Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Every time when I point it out. Every time.
All right. We'll take a vote on it then, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 21, Request to Add Video Lottery Terminals with 2021 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Cat Mandu Indian Cuisine LLC, 5310 East Arrowhead Parkway, pending permit issuance and final inspection per building services. Item 22, New 202021 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License for Lamb Spa LLC, The Spa on Phillips, 224 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 110. Item 23, New 202021 Retail Malt Beverage, South Dakota Farm Wine License, and New 2021 Retail Wine License for, for West Mall Theaters Incorporated, West Mall 7 Theaters, 2101 West 41st Street, Suite, Suite 33. Item 24, Special One-Day Wine Licenses and Special One-Day Off-Sale Packaged Wine Licenses for 69th Street Looks Market to be operated at Verahart Hospital, 4500 West 69th Street for special events on September 16th and 30th, 2020. Item 25, Special One-Day Liquor Licenses for T-Slot Incorporated, JJ's Wine Spirits and Cigars to be operated at Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street North for special events on September 19th and 26th, 2020. Item 26, Special One-Day Wine License for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at the following locations. Blue Moon Designs, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 115, 8th and Railroad Center, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 208, Eighty Lee Spa, 317 South Phillips Avenue, Beckton Jewelry, 325 South Phillips Avenue, Chelsea's Boutique, 220 South Phillips Avenue, Great Outdoor Store, 201 East 10th Street, Home Porch Gifts, 217 South Phillips Avenue, Layered Elements, 701 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 135, Laura Bell Boutique, 206 South Phillips Avenue, MK Threads, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 112, Rayfield's Art and Framing, 431 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 101, Say Anything Jewelry, 225 South Phillips Avenue, Simply Perfect, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 108, Sticks and Steel, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 118, Swamp Thaddeus, 421 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 105, Common Sense, 400 South Second Avenue, TH Gray, 330 South Phillips Avenue, Mint and Basil, 207 South Phillips Avenue, JH and Sons, 216 South Phillips Avenue, Bloom Room Boutique, 701 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 155 for an art and wine walk on October 2nd, 2020. And item 27, Transfer of 2020 Packaged Liquor License and 2020 Retail Wine License from Luciano's North, LTD, Luciano's North, 431 North Phillips Avenue, to Luciano's North, LTD, Luciano's North, 720 South High Line Place.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items 21 through 27. And I would need to ask for a motion to defer item 23 at the request of the applicant. He just wants a little more time to prepare for that.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jamie?
Make a motion to defer item 23 to the meeting of Tuesday, October 6th, 2020.
Second.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie on that deferral. Any questions, counsel?
If I can just say one thing. I hope that we ha, I, I was clicking all around, and I didn't see the security. This is the second bite at the apple for this particular license. And so my hope is that the security, the detailed security plan will be presented for item 23 by October 26th, because that was really the issue that several people had last time that, that license came forward, is not a security plan and...
Yeah, and we did speak about that, and, and that is part of the reason he wants a little more time, just to make sure that that's a firm plan for him. So...
Perfect. That makes sense. Thank you. That's all I was requesting.
It's October 6th that we would like that deferred to.
Yes, October 6th.
Thanks, Jamie. Any other discussion on that deferral? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Next item is the moved item, item 38, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, and the 2021-2025 capital program.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Sean Pritchard, Director of Finance. Before you for consideration is approval of the City of Sioux Falls 2021 budget, authorizing expenditures of $593.6 million for fiscal year 2021, as well as the five-year capital program running from 2021 through 2025, which proposes $736.2 million in investments in road infrastructure, parks and other quality-of-life amenities, public safety and utility infrastructure. The proposed budget and five-year capital program balances our investments in providing needed programming and services with long-term investments in critical infrastructure and quality-of-life amenities. Since the initial budget working session that this council had earlier this year, and through the various budget hearings that we had in August, we have appreciated the opportunity to have great discussions about the financial health of our community, as well as the areas of key investment in this budget proposal, particularly in public safety, water and wastewater infrastructure, and addressing public health through the Triage Center. Thank you for the time that you've taken to review the mayor's budget proposal and five-year capital program. I'll stand by and happy to answer any final questions that you have in regard to the budget.
All right. Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right. Seen none. Counselors, questions for Sean on this?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion to approve this item by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Counselor Kylie. Discussion, counsel. Counselor Sale.
Mr. Mayor, I have an amendment that I would like, if the city clerk would read it, please.
You bet. Go ahead, Tom.
It's Counselor, the mayor. The motion is to amend the 2021 Parks and Recreation Operating Budget to reinstate funding for the municipal ban in the amount of $112,000, funding to come from the Parks and Recreation 2021 Operations Budget.
All right. That motion by Counselor Sale, I have a second for that one?
Second, Starr.
All right. Second by Counselor Starr. Want to speak to that, Counselor Sale, or?
I sure do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the ban is a vital part of Sioux Falls. It has been for 100 years, and I think we need to do a deep dive on where it goes for the next 100 years. If this is approved, if my amendment is approved, a resolution will follow to create an ad hoc committee that we will put people, smart people on there to determine what the funding mechanism, what the schedule is. Let's put everything on the table so we have more details next year at budget time on where we go in the future. So on a almost $600 million budget, I think we can fund the ban for one year at $112,000 and move forward this discussion. I know the public has reached out to all of us multiple times, and we know the support that's in there in the community. So that's why I've offered this amendment. I would encourage support from my fellow colleagues.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this item, counsel, on this amendment? Counselor Recky.
I just want to thank Counselor Sale for his leadership on this issue. He said very early on that he was interested in taking a leadership role. He did follow through, and I think it's an excellent way to proceed. It didn't take much to convince me that we needed to reinstate our municipal ban, so I was behind him right away. I just wanted thank you again for your leadership on this, and I'm in full support of it and have been, you know, from the beginning. I, I, I do have some, some concerns about the contract, you know, which expires in December, but I'm, I'm hopeful that your task force will work speedily and try to have something in place so that recommendations can be made from that task force for how to negotiate that contract when it comes up in December. But thank you again, Counselor Sale.
All right. Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would reiterate with Counselor Recky said as well, and, and thank Counselor Sale for his leadership on this. I do think it's definitely a discussion worth having. This committee should do some good on that. I'd also like to congratulate the, the public out there, and for those of you who have reached out to all of us extensively. And it's been kind of neat to see the enthusiasm and passion out there on this particular topic. I, every once in a while, things come up where we hear a little bit more than usual on certain topics, and I think this one has been right up there in maybe the top five or 10 in my history on the council. So I think it's been kind of terrific to hear from folks and their passion again for this. But thanks for your leadership. I look forward to seeing what comes of this as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. I'll just chime in on this too. On this particular amendment, I know we're talking about a huge budget, that there's been a lot of work and input put in. So I'll keep my comments first towards this amendment. I will be supporting it tonight, and I know it's taken me a while to get there. However, the only reason why I am supporting it is because I know you're going to fix the process. The process is broken in, in how this exists today, as far as, every, every so many years, we do new RFPs for fill-in-the-blank, the Gulf, the Transit, whatever it is. And so I'm not suggesting a new RFP, but I'm suggesting what you are doing with the resolution and looking at the process as far as, does it make sense to have these folks be employees? It certainly makes sense to fund it for an additional year. And then how can we streamline this process for you, Chris, and, and your crew of huge people that you have with this? So I will be supporting it tonight, but I'm really hopeful that we can make this a better process as far as kind of how these, these folks are hired and brought in, and make sure that it makes sense. So thank you again for your leadership with this and entertaining my questions along the way.
Thanks, Counselor. Any other discussion on the amendment here?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
I would move to amend the $112,000 replacement with $140,000.
All right. I don't hear a second for that. So that fails for lack of a second. So we're back to the original motion, which is an amendment. Any other discussion there? Seen none. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
All right. That amendment passes eight to zero. So we're back to the main motion as amended. Other discussion, counsel, on this item? All right. Counselor, our Sale, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Passing an almost $600 million budget just can't pass me by without me speaking up. That's huge. That is a huge number. And I know the number of hours that our staff, that put into the city council staff, and I can only guess at the number of hours that the administration and their staff and everybody along, especially finance, has put forward. Not being, this is only my first term, so I have not had I do appreciate the fact that there were no videos during the presentations.
(laughing).
I will say, my hat's off to the administration be able, in the time of a pandemic, of a national downturn, of high unemployment, to be able to put together a budget that is sound fiscally. There were no holes in it that I could find to go forward with that. I really think that the citizens of Sioux Falls should be proud of what we have done and what the administration has done. And I think in the whole state of South Dakota, we are the leader in what is happening for responsible spending of the money. And as we continue to lead, we continue to attract businesses, attract people to this city. And I'm proud to say that I've been part of that. I've lost a lot of votes along the way and I'll continue to lose those, but I'm proud of what has happened here. And I look forward to supporting this and I would encourage my other councillors to do the same.
All right, thank you, councillor. Other discussion on this, councillor Erickson?
I'll just echo some of the same sentiments with that. And, you know, this year you don't see a lot of amendments from this council. And so I just want to address that a little bit, that we did have the municipal band amendment brought forward, but there's not a lot of other amendments. I've been on the council where there's been 12 amendments or more, cuts, additions, things of that nature, where sometimes we're Robin Peter to pay Paul to make sure that we can make some of the nonprofits whole. And you're not seeing that. And part of that is, the reason why is in this budget, you see bits and pieces of every single city councillor sitting here in the budget, whether it's the CIP or the general fund or whatever it is. You will see all things on there that mean a lot to each and every one of us that I, I mean, I could sit here and name one thing for every single one of us that mean the world to us. One for me is triage. The fact that that's in the budget, it's amazing. And, you know, coming from the legislature and my council colleague here next to me is if you can get something in the budget early on and not have to fight about it to amend it later, makes it a lot easier. And so that fact right there that we're able to work together, work with the administration to making sure that we're heard and our representation is also within those budget is a huge thing. So I just don't want the public to be alarmed to say, they just sat there and voted for this budget. Yes, because the items that we already want are in that budget and we've sliced and diced and we've done a lot of the work that you repri- we represent you to do. So thank you to every single administration person for listening to our staff's questions, our questions. I know sometimes they may seem silly, but you entertain us and listen to them to help us get there to understand why we question the things that we do. So with that, I will be supporting this and thank everyone for their time with this and look forward to 2021.
Thank you, councillor. Other discussion on this item, counsel? All right, seen none. We'll take a vote on the main motion.
Again, Mayor, is, is there public input on this?
We call for public input.
We did call for public input on it.
Yep, we did. Any other discussion then? We're on item 38.
We don't call them for us.
We called for public input on this item.
It was.
There was. I'm going to call for a vote then, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to one. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 28. Second reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing appropriations authorizing an increase in property tax revenue pursuant to SDCL 10-13-35 and the means of financing for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021.
Good evening again. So this item is the second reading of the appropriations ordinance and provides final approval for those appropriations necessary to fund the budget that you just approved and specifically $318.2 million in the support for the tax appropriated funds, which are part of this budget in fiscal year 2021, including the general fund, the sales and use tax fund, the storm drainage fund, the transit fund, the housing fund, the entertainment tax fund, and the other special revenue funds. The ordinance also approves certification of the property tax assessment necessary to support the appropriation and the approved budget. I'll stand by and answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Tim Stanga. If anybody thought outside of watching this circus, would have belie- would have believed that this city council would have took money from the municipal band, you'd be fooling yourself. But when it comes to raising taxes on elderly people that are 75 to 80 years old and still have to go out and work to be able to make ends meet, there's a problem. Big problem in this city. They say, oh, but you can freeze your taxes when you get to a certain age. I'll tell you what, if you try to, try to hit the curriculum on being able to freeze your taxes, you'd have to be homeless. I think what we should do is look at a new ordinance stating that if you're 75 years old, your taxes will be fr- will be frozen automatically. So that way you don't have to work the rest of your life to be able to support yourself and live in, out inside your own property and not have to live in a nursing home. Yes, there has been a lot of people that have come up here and talked about high property taxes and when you tax every year. There's people that come for the orchestra, they come up all the time. So what is the difference? Just amazes me when this city, and I sit and watch it in my neighborhood and I know there's a lot of other neighborhoods, that there are people doing projects on their houses without permits. I have caught so many of them right now, it's not even funny, but that's revenue, that's tax revenue. But do you guys really care? I got people that are gutting out houses, no permits. Why? And I can't even get the city out to look at them? There's a problem here. We got so many houses that are being built and everything. Where does that revenue go during the whole year? People would like to know that. But if the city's not going to do their job and it takes citizens to have to do it, it's pretty sad. There's a lot of revenue out there that you guys are missing out on. But do you guys really care? I know there's a few of you that'll sit and smile and giggle and, and play hangman while you're listening to the people in the public. But I'll tell you what, it's sure not funny when it comes to be 75, 80 years old and you got to go out and work and you got people that are 20, 25-year-olds panhandling because they don't have to work? Maybe you should work on a panhandling law and try to get that taken care of.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item tonight? All right, councillors, you got any questions for Sean on this one? Look for a motion on it?
Move approval?
Second.
Motion approved by councillor Selberg on that, seconded by councillor Sale. Discussion, counsel, on this item? All right, councillor Sale?
I'd like to amend it to reflect the changes, that resolution adopting the budget that we just had.
Okay. Have a second for that?
Second.
All right, it's a motion by councillor Sale and seconded by councillor Selberg for the changes to the resolution to adopt the budget in the capital program that we just passed as amended. Any discussion on that one? All right, let's take a vote on that.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We're back to, to the main motion as amended now. Other discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Recky?
I, I need some clarification. What are we voting on right now? Are we voting on?
The main motion is amended. Item 28 amended.
Yes. I vote yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to one. We'll move on to item 40.
Item 40. A resolution authorizing the city council chair and vice chair to appoint a task force to study and recommend a long-term strategy that fosters a financially sustainable Sioux Falls municipal band.
Councillor Sale, are you going to present this item?
I certainly do. This is a tag team for my amendment to fund the band for one year. As I previously have stated, it's, we will design a task force and, and the resolution will identify that, that will come up with a long-term strategy. As councillor Erickson pointed out, sometimes we do an RFP and this is another way, hopefully, to skin the cat to get that done. I look forward to that. And if this is a affirmative, I look forward to people from the public and from the administration to put names forward that would make this just the greatest task force in the world.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, you want to put a motion on the floor and we'll-
I move to approve.
Second Jensen.
You know what, I, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask- that's okay, that motion and second is on the floor, but now I'll open it up for public input before we have council discussion. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this? Please come forward.
You all know, I'm Chris Hill. I'm a bandmaster of the Sioux Falls Municipal Band. I just wanted to say thank you for the vote for one year of funding. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your service to the band, too. We do appreciate it. Other discussion on this, from public input? Going on?
Tim Stanga, I'm sure it'll be one heck of a task force. It's too bad we can't put a task force together on taxes, seeing how we can eliminate a tax for a year when people are suffering. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other input from the public tonight on this item? All right, I'm not seeing any. So we have a motion and a second on the floor from Sale, seconded by councillor Jensen. Any discussion on the council here on this item? All right, seen none. I'm going to call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. And we'll get back to the regular order of the agenda and that's item 29.
Item 29, first reading, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations for debt repayment. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6th, 2020.
Sean, good evening.
You're on, man.
Sorry about that. All right, tonight, we are speaking in regard to a bond repayment proposal. We've kind of talked about this in the past, last week and, and the weeks preceding that. Just as a reminder for public consumption, we did pass a ba- a bond ordinance last week for the public safety facility. That proposal and bond ordinance included the option to refinance three specific bonds that are presently available to repay without penalty. The total amount of those bonds is approximately $31.5 million. With the CARES Act funds that we've received, one of the possibilities that we've been talking with you about is, is paying down some existing debt in those notes instead of refinancing them. And there's several benefits in moving forward with that. So this is the first reading of that, this ordinance. The second reading would be coming in October 6th. Reason for bringing this forward to you now is we are in the position of trying to move forward with funding the bond that was passed last week. forward with funding the bond that was passed last week, and the decision by this body in terms of whether we repay or refinance those bonds will determine how we put out our statement of offering and how we structure the public safety bonds. So just to kind of reiterate what we had talked about previously, again, it would be approximately $25.2 million to pay down the debt. We figure it's going to be a little bit less than that, but we're structured it at the $25.2 million. As I'll discuss, we would only transfer the amount necessary to pay those off. Those bonds that we're looking to repay are the Quality of Life II Bonds, the 2009 B1 Flood Control Bonds, and the 2009 B2 Flood Control Bonds, and they have varying maturities. The shortest one only has three years left on it. The longest one still remains to have nine years left on it. With an investment of paying down those funds, that would essentially free up $32 million in cash flow for the city's capital program over the next, excuse me, nine years and provide an opportunity for some additional investments. So this is a cash management tool by being able to pay down that debt, and even though the city doesn't have a large amount of debt, we're fairly deleveraged when you compare us to our counterparts throughout the Upper Midwest. This would further reduce our debt exposure from the Sales and Use Tax Fund. It would also save us another $8 million during the remaining 11 years of the 20-year public safety bond. So in those first nine years, we'll save $32 million. We're going to save another $8 million, and that's going to occur because primarily we will shore up and level off the amortization we were planning for the public safety bond rather than placing most of the debt service in the remaining 15 years of the bond. By paying off this debt, it's going to provide some cash flow to be able to have a level 20-year debt service, and it's going to reduce our long-term interest expenses for that. By utilizing these funds, so essentially it's what we would term the unobligated balance of the general fund for utilization for this. Through the CARES Act and so forth, as we talked about, there is some certain amount of risk. If we were audited, they determine that the eligible cost for which we were reimbursed through the Department of Treasury were to change. There is a risk of repayment by utilizing this to pay down debt service. We're against, we're essentially hedging against potentially that risk while at the same time freeing up vital cash flow in future years for our capital program. We talked about this last week, but this is the schedule of what we would anticipate freeing up within the capital program that is not currently obligated or available, and that we see about $2.5 million of savings in 2021, and that continues to increase over time to $0.8 million in 2022 and almost $3 million in 2023 and upwards from that up through 2029. You can see the accumulated savings of $32 million. Between now and 2040, we'd essentially have reduced our debt service for the city by approximately $40 million as a result of paying down this debt service now. The ordinance in front of you essentially does two actions. One, it appropriates money or transfers it from the general fund to the Sales and Use Tax Fund. So we pay these debt service obligations out of that Sales and Use Tax Fund. The additional unobligated balance that resulted from our reimbursements from the CARES Act has occurred in the general fund. So the first action would be to transfer the funds to the general, from the general fund to the Sales and Use Tax Fund, and then it would have to be re-appropriated again. This is in the same ordinance, $25.2 million from the Sales and Use Tax Fund that would be utilized to repay that debt. As I noted, only the amount necessary. Once we have the final amount, that would come in from our bond counsel as well as our public finance management consulting during the bond issuance. That's the amount that would be used to utilize to repay those. We would look to execute the redemption on November 15. This is the date of our annual PNI payment, principal and interest payment for those bonds. So we would make our annual payment for this year. We would release the reserves that would be utilized to pay down the debt, and then the additional amount that you're appropriating here, and collectively would total approximately $31 million altogether. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding to this proposal. As I noted, this is the first reading of this ordinance. The second reading would come up in three weeks on October 6. So happy to answer any questions you have tonight or any that you have forthcoming in the next several weeks as well as you consider this. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions for Sean on this? Counselor Knightser?
Director Pritchard, what would you project our low watermark of our budget reserve is going to be as it relates to the 25% policy target we have if we make this expenditure?
So a little challenging to note that presently because we didn't originally include any of the anticipated reimbursement from the CARES Act as part of our budget. It's kind of a one-time. So you're putting the budget together. It was very much unknown to what extent we would qualify for reimbursements, and that has become more known here over the last several months. Originally, we were anticipating within two to three years, we would be hitting the 25% threshold and holding there for a couple of years and then seeing an improvement in that. Depending on how the rest of the CARES Act funds are utilized for projects or for other determinations, that will drive some of what that reserve fund balances, as will the changes that we have for our revenues here over the next several months. We have seen some stabilization to our revenues over the last couple of months. We'll continue to monitor that closely, but we had estimated 0% growth for this year and 4% growth for next year on our most recent projections. So some of that variability will become a little bit more known over the next several months.
Well, as it relates to, as we go towards the end of the year, when you make this, we make this payment to pay all of this off, will still be above the 25% policy target? That's kind of what I'm getting at.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So yes, we have currently, the $25 million that we're requesting, we should have that in our account in addition to anything we would have had on our regular unfunded balance within the next probably two weeks. So we've taken in about $21.5 million, and we expect another $4 million here within the next two weeks or so, and we'll continue doing reimbursements of about $4.5 million a month through November. And so that will bring forward most of our maximum that we're allowed through the CARES Act. So you will see, we'll have the monthly financials next week, so you have an opportunity to see where we sit from a unfunded balance or the cash balances right now when the report comes out next week. But depending on whether we obligate some of those additional funds, I would expect the general reserve to go up because of the CARES Act fund as we get toward the end of the year.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor. Other questions for Sean here on this item? Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, one of the, I guess the way I thought we left this last week or the last time that we talked about this is that we were going to make an overall policy decision on the whole $41.5 million first, to see a list of other projects and things that we were going to do. If we do this, and I'm not opposed or I'm definitely going to vote for going to second reading, but we're making a policy decision without seeing a list of all of the projects potentially that we could move forward. So is that the way you remember the discussion?
We were going to have some discussions in early October in regard to that. We did have a discussion at the informational last week when we were speaking about the CARES Act about how we were going to be looking to maybe bring this forward this week. The reason being is just some counsel advice that we try to fund the bond prior to the national elections, which inherently creates some unknown risks within the marketplace to potentially increase bond prices during the interim. But in order to fund that bond, we need to know whether we're going to refinance it or if we're going to pay it down. And so that, this gave us one more week of advance notice to do that. As far as the remaining funding, certainly that funding is not in our accounts yet and won't be for several months. In terms of shovel-ready projects, I mean, those really, we're nearing the end of our construction season, so shovel-ready projects really is a moot point to a certain extent as we, again, look forward to next year. And there's going to be some critical pieces to that. So the remaining funding, about $16.5 million that is remaining, would be under discussion as well as freed-up funds within the capital program depending on how we end the year. But certainly if we repaid the debt, we would see some increased capacity within the capital fund as well that hasn't been currently obligated.
My other question, or if you could talk a little bit about this, we spend a lot of time talking about hedging for what the feds may or may not do, but I keep going back to the intent of the legislation was to put this money into play to help people who are hurting, to take a look at what's going on in the community. We did that earlier this evening with the CVB proposal that we're helping people in the hospitality industry. I think we need to act quicker. I think we need to invest this money. I think we need to quit worrying about hedging. If we wanted to be totally safe, we would take the $41.5 million and put it under a mattress, and we could cover our heads and be scared. We've spent a lot of time in the last six months about being scared and getting out there and doing the right thing and balancing that. So I mean, on one side, we're saying, hey, we're going to promote things, but we want to hedge putting, you know, we could go out to the market and reborrow this money if Congress changes its mind. I guess if that's the case, we'd be scared about the whole 41 rather than just the 25 that we could reborrow. So I mean, tell me, what is the real risk? I mean, where are you seeing that we need to hedge this money that we could potentially have to pay it back? Because it looks pretty solid at this point, the advice that, you know, whether it's CCOG that the state's done that, I think the qualifying expenses that we've put forward are very solid in the legislation. And again, I know we're dealing with the federal government, but at the same time, we're dealing with people who are losing their homes, losing their businesses, and doing the most we can do to put this money in play.
So a couple of points to that. So the inherent risk that comes with it is, I would say, the very limited amount of time in which the guidance was written to both states and local governments and how the reimbursements for these funds would occur. So Congress passed a significant and substantial bill and was tasked the federal departments to basically essentially write rules very, very quickly on a large number of programs, not just this local government assistance piece, but a massive number of programs through HUD and public safety and Departments of Health and Human Services. So there's a vast number of organizations. So Treasury did write guidance, much like it did for PPP, and then has changed that guidance over time and reissued guidance repeatedly, and they've issued that specifically to direct beneficiaries of the funding. And the direct beneficiaries of the funding was the state of South Dakota, so we're receiving our funds through the state. The state themselves have put out their own guidance in relation to that, maybe just trimmed it down specifically from the federal guidance in terms of what eligible expenses are allowed to be reimbursed. But a key piece of that, what creates some concern is that, you know, the legislation was written with the intent that you couldn't be reimbursed for expenses that were originally budgeted in your current budget. But that shifted when the Department of Treasury submitted administrative rules stating that you could assume that public safety payroll and some other payrolls could be considered substantially different from what they were intended in the original budget due to the, that they were substantially designated to the public health crisis and therefore became eligible for reimbursement. OIG's office within the own Department of Treasury has not completely contradicted that assumption, but they have put out additional guidance suggesting that you can't just assume and that you have to substantiate. These are where some of the risks are, and we're talking about a significant amount of money. In fact, an amount of money that exceeds our existing general fund reserve balance. So if there is an audit of these funds, writing a check to repay them is certainly not an easily accessible thing for the city to be able to do. So there's the inherent risk that's associated with that in terms of putting the city at potential financial risk if they have to be repaid, given the significant amount that they are. So yes, the safest thing you could do is put it in a mattress, and it would do essentially nothing. It wouldn't stimulate the economy, and you'd collect minimal amounts of interest income. Paying down debt is truly a cash management strategy. It's one level up from that, and essentially you're paying down debt, which is a higher interest rate for you, taking existing cash, paying it off, and basically retrieving or pulling out the cash flow that results from that, which adds to your capital program and be able to exceed it. So it allows us to hedge if there was a sufficient issue in the future in an audit situation where the funds had to be repaid. And keep in mind, we signed an agreement with the state that said they could recapture this money if it was taken from them. They would pull it back from us through either our sales taxes or any number of methods or opportunities that they have to withhold funding from the city. So they have a lever to be able to do that that's outside of our control. So again, by paying down the debt, in the future, if we had to return those funds or they were sequestered from us, we have the capacity to reissue debt. We're no worse than we currently are, other than the interest rate risk between debt issued today versus debt issued tomorrow.
Other questions for Sean on this item? All right. I'd look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson on that. Discussion amongst the council? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 30, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of 1510 West 51st Street from the unzoned district to the Iowa Light Industrial District, number 12686-2020. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application. The owner is Connolly Properties. It's located just east of the Glory House and the old Ice and Rec Center. It's roughly .41 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the Culligan Water Systems Building is looking at constructing an additional parking lot on that east side.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason on this one?
Move approval?
Second.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. That's to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6. Any discussion, counselors? All right. Hearing none, we'll vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 31, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning portion of property located 7301 South Cliff Avenue from the C3 Commercial Community District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density and RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban Districts, number 12685-2020. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero with the following conditions. One, the RD2 zone only allowed 81 or 82 forms. Two, in the RD2 zone, a minimum five-foot berm along the west property line abutting tract one of South Cliff Grassland Edition. Three, in the RD2 zone, coniferous and deciduous trees required at a rate of at least 22.59 landscaping units per 100 feet, a fraction thereof along west property line abutting tract one of South Cliff Grassland Edition. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
The applicant here is Selemi Companies. The owner is South Cliff Grasslands LLC. It's located at the southwest corner of East 77th Street and South Cliff Avenue. It's about 6.13 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant was looking to construct four three-story building, apartment buildings with 32 units per building. We did have significant neighborhood opposition to the proposed plan as seen here. Their major concerns were drainage, traffic, and apartments next to the existing single-family homes. If you look at the zoning map or the aerial map here, it's actually adjacent to a city-owned detention pond, a regional detention pond, so drainage should be pretty straightforward. Traffic issues. The existing zoning of C3 would allow commercial buildings of upwards of 75,000 square feet. So in theory, if the apartments as presented in this one would generate roughly five trips per apartment, about 600 trips a day, this current zoning district and the size of the existing parcel at just over six acres is roughly the same size as a fairway grocery store parcel. If we had a 30,000 square foot, say, fairway on this, that would generate roughly 3,200 trips a day. So the actual zoning should actually reduce the number of traffic trips. The applicant did work relatively well with the neighbors adjacent to the west and the Grand Prairie Estates Edition, and they worked out a couple of concessions. One, to allow some RD2 zoning on that west portion of that property adjacent to the existing detention pond. And really, the point of that would be for them to do fourplexes along that west property line, and then they would reduce the number of buildings from four to three, two 30-unit buildings and then two, or excuse me, 130-unit building and then two 32-unit buildings. And then they also worked out an additional berm along that west side, a five-foot berm and some additional landscaping. And I guess that's what I have today.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right. Counsel, do you have any questions for Jason on this item?
Move approval?
Second. Knightser?
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Knightser to approve this item. Discussion, counselors? Counselor Knightser?
I just want to state from the outset that I do, I do have concerns in general about the idea that we continue to do down zones, but then we require a plethora of conditions. It doesn't make a lot of sense. That being said, I have talked to the developer of the project, and they are amenable to it. But I think as a policy going forward, we need to be really careful that in every case we're actually affecting something important because we do have to get more units in the city of Sioux Falls, more housing units, and we have to be careful that we're not adding conditions that are simply just going to add cost, which are going to get passed on to the tenants. So we just have to be careful to be coherent and consistent going forward. That would be my only caution. But it looks like a good project, and they are okay with this particular set of conditions.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion, Counsel, on this item? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. The next item?
Item 32, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning portion of property located 4501 West 85th Street from the C3 Commercial Community, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, O Office, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density and RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban Districts to the C3 Commercial Community, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, LW Live Work, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban and CN Conservation Districts, number 12684-2020. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
The applicant here is Joel Dykstra. The owner is RMB Family LLC. This is located at the southeast corner of 85th and Tallgrass Avenue. It's about 65 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at to begin subdividing and build some commercial apartments and residential development. As you can see, it's relatively zoned that way right now. They're just starting to shift things around to really, they finally have an idea of really their first start of this development, which will most likely be that RA3 portion apartments in the center.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, questions for Jason on this one?
Move approval?
Second.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6. Discussion, counselors? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightser?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 33, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 2300 South Rosneak Avenue from the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District to the O Office District, number 12667-2020. And amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls, Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero with the following conditions. One, minimum of 20-foot front yard setback of South Rosneak Avenue. Two, minimum of two buildings with a separation between the buildings of a minimum of 10 feet. The recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
The applicant and owner here is Westwood Valley LLC. This is located north of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about .17 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing some residential compatible storage units with pitched roofs, brick-on-the-front facade and residential lighting. Staff also felt that some additional elements needed to be added to the specific plan to make them a little bit more residential in style to fit in better with the existing townhomes on the north and south. That's where the conditions came into play. Staff was looking to get a 20-foot front yard setback instead of the requirement of a 15, just so they're, the existing townhomes need to have 25, just so they're a little Staff was looking to get a 20-foot front yard setback instead of the requirement of a 15, just so they're, the existing townhomes need to have 25, just so they're a little bit more in line and this building's not sticking out closer to Rosneak Avenue. And then the other one, they would like to construct one large building. Staff felt that we needed to separate those two buildings into two forested storage garages, so it gave it still that additional residential element, so.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Robert Brandt. So I'm in the townhome just behind this proposed building here, and we were working with builder Rick Dunlap for roughly over a month, and he was trying to purchase the land behind our unit to put homes there instead of a garage unit. The lot is owned by four homeowners, and roughly over a month to get four people to do anything is a little bit, not enough time. He decided after one month that was not feasible to do that, after we've all agreed to doing that, to put another home there, potentially two homes instead of a garage. My question is, how many, how many storage units does the city of Sioux Falls currently have unoccupied at this point? And the need for this needless storage unit is my first question. My second one is, all four of the homeowners behind the house are up for selling the land and putting two homes there instead of a garage unit. We'd rather have neighbors than a garage where we can invite our neighbors over for a picnic or whatever. So my proposal is we don't do this, and we look, again, at selling the land to put homes there instead. So I'd ask that you guys look into that first. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Chase Brandt. My husband, Robbie Brandt. We purchased this condo in 2011, and it was originally supposed to be a highway behind, and then after, that has actually been altered to being now residential area. So our lot is longer than every other lot in, on our side of the street, so that's why this conflict has actually occurred. So it was initially supposed to be a highway, and it's now been altered, and all the other lots next to us have all been altered to being where it is mapped out on, where the grassline ends. Ours extends a little bit further, and we really much prefer to not have storage units. We prefer to have, keep it residential.
Okay. Thanks, Chase. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, do you have any questions for Jason on this item? Counselor Brecky?
Jason, could you just explain to us, address their concern?
Sure, absolutely. They are correct. This used to be the location of where the west side corridor was going to go, Veterans Parkway, as it came up the west side. That was obviously moved over to T Ellis Road. So all of those lots on Norma Trail were extra deep, like you can see this one in the red. The developer, I believe, had purchased everything else north and south of there to do the townhomes. With talks with them, they did go to those four property owners. They couldn't work out a deal to purchase that additional land, pretty much be the area that looks like it's kind of a farm field here and not the grass, to be able to construct a townhome. And that's where they moved forward. They have this tiny lot, you can't do a townhome on it. They needed to do something there. Staff felt if they could do it residentially compatible, make it look like some garages, it could possibly fit in with the neighborhood. And obviously, storage units seem like they're in hot commodity. People need boats and things like that, especially when you're in these areas that are fourplexes that really don't have any on-street parking, so they probably would be utilized pretty quickly.
What's north and south, or, I don't know, what's on either side of it? What's the zoning?
It's all, to the north and south is all RD2. It's all townhomes. You can see all the lots, they purchased all the other lots in the north and south to be able to do fourplexes on there, across the street, a single-family. And so they do residential compatible storage units. They'd still have a Level B buffer yard along the north, or, excuse me, a Level A buffer yard along the northeast and south sides. That includes a fence with landscaping and different elements.
So are they gonna, the way it sits right now, then, is it going to be surrounded by RD2, though? It's still all RD2 around it?
Correct. The zoning around it is RD2.
So what do you see for the future? Is RD2 going to change to be compatible with this, or should this be left RD2?
It can be left RD2 if that's your council's decision, but the lot will just stay empty unless they can come to an agreement. And as you know, staff, we don't get into agreements between property owners and what it costs for them to purchase that land. The applicant had indicated their ultimate reasoning, they would rather purchase that and do a fourplex, but it wasn't able to do that at that time or come to an agreement with four property owners to the east.
It just feels a little bit like spot zoning, to put it right in here with all the RD2.
We don't technically have spot zoning under our new ordinance. It's not really something that we utilize. We look at transitions. Office is usually a pretty good transition to existing townhomes. It's just, it's an odd piece of property, and it's something that can't be developed. We looked at it and said, hey, you know, if we can get it to look similar to the garages in the neighborhood, it may not stick out too much like a sore thumb, but it's a difficult piece of property. I totally understand, but.
Thank you.
Counselor Knightzert.
First of all, I'm conflicted. I will say residential compatible self-storage can work. I've got it within 100, 200 feet of me, and if you drove by it, you'd have no idea that it was anything. It just looks like residential garages, if done right. That being said, I'm wondering if one of the people who testified might be able to shed some light on this not able to come to terms? Would you mind? Now, you're one property owner of four, it sounds like, because this is, these are all separate lots, but could you?
The main property that was not able to sell was Unit 1, because it was a rental unit, and the person that owned the unit was off-site, didn't live in Sioux Falls, didn't live in the state. That homeowner now purchased it, so all four of us are homeowners. The fourth and newest homeowner is willing to purchase or to sell the land, as the other three were. So we are all for an agreement on selling this to purchase, for, I guess, Rick Dunlap to purchase this and put townhomes there, now instead of the garage units.
I, and.
So that was the issue, was it was a, it was a rental unit, not a homeowner.
Okay, and I'm not asking for numbers or anything. I don't want to get in the middle of negotiations, but did you feel like, were there discussions where you felt like the rest of you were close in terms of coming to terms, in terms of, because sometimes there's a numbers issue, I will tell you that.
I'm not aware of the financial piece of it, if you want to talk to that, but.
We never got as far as actually.
Give them up to the mic, sir.
We never got as far as actually proposal numbers of any sorts. It, one of the owners took too long to actually get back to us, and it was a month and a couple of days, and then the developer decided he's going a different route.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Well, I'm glad we have a couple weeks, so we can.
You can come to the mic, please. We will have, we will have second reading. Remember, this is just to move it to first reading is what we're discussing tonight.
Can I read the quick email from Rick Dunlap? "After over a month of time working to come to resolution on the purchase of the rear of your lot, I've realized that it is not possible between the cost of mortgage requirements, purchase of ground, engineering, and legal fees, as well as the extended timeframe by the lender. The purchase is unfeasible at this time. I appreciate everyone's time that was given on this transaction. As we soon begin our mass grading of the land to the west, we will be willing to grade your rear lot and place black dirt on your property. This will make it easier for your association to manage the portion of your property in the future. If the grading is agreeable to you, please let me know. If not, we'll be willing to adjust the grading around your property." So again, he gave us little less, little more than, excuse me, a month for four homeowners, one that didn't even live in the state, to come to some sort of resolution, and no money was even talked about as far as how much it was going to cost to do this. And we would all, again, like to see neighbors versus all hours of the night garage coming and going.
Sure. Understood. We have a couple weeks. I think we need to talk to the parties. Thanks.
Thank you, counselor. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Star.
I'm going to give them a little bit more time than a couple of weeks to do this. I'm going to move to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 20, 2020.
Second, Brecky.
All right, we've got a motion by Star, second by Brecky.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Star.
Thank you. I think this will give a chance to work out something that's amicable to both, knowing that the council's kind of hedging our bets on both sides of this and what we'd like to see, and we'd rather have the homeowners work this out themselves with the developer rather than us making a decision on whether we force a land sale or what we do. But this gives it plenty of time to find everybody to work out a deal and bring it forward. It gives us almost a month to, for them to come to terms if it works before we have to make a final decision on this.
All right. Any other discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, just a point. If Counselor Star could just change that to the third meeting of October, because we may change the 20th to the 19th later in the meeting.
So are you suggesting that I amend it by changing it to the 19th? Or just the third, the third meeting of October?
Just change it to the third. The third meeting of October.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to amend the date to the third meeting of October.
Second.
You want to second that? Okay. All right, so a quick vote on that. That's an amendment to the motion, so let's quick vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to two, so we're back to the main motion now as amended, which is to set a date of second reading for the third Tuesday of October. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to two, so we're back to the main motion now as amended, which is to set a date of second reading for the third Tuesday of October. Any discussion on that? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, motion by Counselor Selberg, second by Counselor Star to set the date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6 on this. Discussion, councilors? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. On item 35, please.
Item 35, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning portion of property located at the northwest corner of West 41st Street and South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the LW Live Work and C3 Commercial Community Districts, number 12645-2020, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendation is to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
The applicant and owner here is Lloyd Company. The owner is Ulrich Family. It's located at the northwest corner of West 41st Street and South Ellis Road. It's about 23.25 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a new subdivision with commercial office and apartment uses.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this one? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason here?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Selberg, second by Counselor Star to set the date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6 on this. Discussion, councilors? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 36, please.
Item 36, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 30, City Council. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October 6, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Erickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was presented to the Operations Committee on August 27 of 2020. The recommendation from the committee was to bring forth to the full council. The ordinance is in front of you here. Counselor Knightzert is on the committee and offered to assist in this. The intent behind this ordinance is committee meetings. We have standing committees. Probably the public doesn't even realize it, because I don't know the last time we've met. I think it's been a year or longer, and so we've all kind of beat around the bush a little bit as far as how to make this process better, what we can do for the committee process, and not have them just constantly canceled. So on the screen, you will see that the amendment is the City Council may assign or refer any policy question to a City Council Committee. For its study consideration and our recommendation, a City Council Committee cannot convene a meeting unless there are three or more of its members are present. All agendas for the City Council Committee shall be posted with at least a 24-hour notice. So you'll notice on this that, one, we are being more strict than state law, because there generally is not a quorum of the council at these committees, but we want to make sure that the majority of those committee members are there, so there will be at least three of those committee members there, and that we are allowing a 24-hour notice and making these a publicly noticed committee meeting, even though we don't have to, all in the name of transparency. I would appreciate your favorable vote. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counselor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this topic tonight? Counselors, let's move to a motion, and then we'll get any discussion.
Move to set the reading for Tuesday, October 6, second reading.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Erickson, second by Counselor Brecky on this. Discussion, councilors? Counselor Brecky.
Just one question for Counselor Erickson. Nothing in this would prohibit just an ad hoc committee that's other than the standing committees.
Nothing.
That would just, that could just be done as well.
That can also be done as well.
So this just converts our standing committees to standing ad hoc committees, but if there's some unique item that we just wanted to do like a task force or, we could do that as well.
Absolutely, and this would really just mock the way that we do the operations. They meet as an un, as-needed basis. They're all publicly noticed, and they're all welcome to the public, and so these would be the exact same way to do it. Should we be working on a land use item that we want to have more of a task force with, it would come before the council to assign that. Or if we want to dive in deeper to items such as transit, I believe, was one. I don't know if chickens was one. I think that was one at one point, and then there's a lot of other topics that have gone through. The biggest one being annexation task force, as well as billboards.
Thank you for the answer. As, I would just say that I have been a fan a long time for using ad hoc committees, you know, as opposed to standing committees, so I liked this idea of really converting our standing committees to ad hoc committees and then still having the ability to do that. And that does free up some time, which I hope we can put better use to, that it's always scheduled and then canceled. So I think that that allows us some additional programmable time, and so I'm excited about that as well. Thank you.
All right, other discussion, counsel, on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Star.
Just quickly, I think Counselor Erickson's exactly right. I think the times that we've looked at standing committees meeting, we've said, gosh, everybody on the council's interested, and it would make more sense to bring it back to an informational as well. It ends up, a lot of times, the committee meetings that we have had, we've gone back to four of us on the dais and four, three or four of us in the audience anyway, so it makes sense that we're all up here to get a chance to at least comment, rather than to have council members have to come to the podium to ask questions and be involved. So I think this moves us in the right direction, that we can spend more time as a committee of the whole, really, with informational meetings. So I totally support this moving forward.
All right, any other discussion, counsel? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on this one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item thirty-seven, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter thirty-nine, Personnel Regulations and Benefits, Retirement and Pensions, Section thirty-nine point zero-three-six, Application to Appoint of Officers. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October sixth, twenty-twenty.
Councillor Kylie, let me give you...
Thank you very much. Councillor Sale and I are bringing this forward, and the bump back, as it was commonly referred to, existed prior to two thousand and fifteen, which meant that if an administrative position was filled from within a city department by a city employee, and then later on, let's say that that chief of police was not retained by a future mayor, they were able to go back to the position that they had retained prior to being promoted to the chief position in this particular example. While in two thousand and fifteen, that ability to move back or bump back was revoked, at that time councillor Erickson and I attempted amendment that would exclude police and fire from that proposal, but it went to a tiebreaker, and we lost. So, I am bringing it back again tonight. Councillor Sale and I are bringing it back again this evening. That would allow the police chief and the chief of the fire department in the future, if they are selected from within the ranks of police and fire, and then if they're not going to be retained by, again, let's say, a future mayor, that they have the ability to go back to the position they held previously. They have a very, very much a rank-and-file system, and so they are very good at promoting from within, and you might think, well, gosh, what's, you know, what's the difference? The difference is, this really makes it difficult for somebody who's in the middle of their career to make a decision to accept a position where maybe as soon as four years, they could be out of that position, whereas if somebody towards the end of their career, it's a little easier decision to make. But for that person, early in their career, in the middle of their career, not so easy. And why isn't it? Because with a lot of our other, in my opinion, a lot of our other director positions, we are, they are able to go back into finance, or they can go back into health, they can go back into other positions within the city of Sioux Falls. But where does a chief of police or a fire chief go to find an equivalent position in the area? You just, it just doesn't happen. You'd have to move outside of the area. So, we are proposing that we bring back the bump back for police and fire. Chief Burns and Chief Goodroad are here to speak on this item as well, but at this point, I'm going to defer to councillor Sale.
Thank you, councillor Kylie, and I'm happy to sign on to this with you. Having been on the fire department when several, two fire chiefs were taken out of their position by new elected officials. We had a new mayor, wanted to bring in his buddy. We had a new police-fire commissioner, which we used to have at that time, brought in his buddy. No fire chief at that time was doing anything wrong, they just got moved back to their previous position. And that's why there's hesitant in police-fire to move up, and other departments also, to move up in a position that they might be subject to political winds. So, that's why we're bringing this back, and I believe Brecky was probably in the city when some of that happened also. So, at that time, those chiefs moved back and served out their career. They did a very good job. So, I think this is one step that we can do, and we did meet with the administration, and we talked through it with it, and so it's not something that we're surprising them with. So, I would encourage your support on this item. Thank you.
All right, thank you, councillor. All right, anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion on the floor, and we can go into any discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, October sixth, by Kylie, second by Sale on that. Discussion, councillor Brecky.
I would like to chime in a little bit. I know when you presented it, you talked about the question, you know, and the discussion about whether you were going far enough, whether you should go back to the full bump-back provision as it was initially in two thousand and fifteen. And I would encourage considering, looking at that, because, you know, I do have a history with that, and it's more than just a police and fire issue. It's more about encouraging those people to take those leaps that can become up and out, and allowing them to bump back, you know, encourages your mid-management to have a career path that would allow you that flexibility, again, and allowing you to bump back without... Some people are excellent employees, but they're just not good leaders, and when they demonstrated that, they can go back and still be excellent employees. And the thing about it, you know, and I talked to Bill O'Toole about this, it wasn't used very often, even when it was in full, full scale. I mean, but to your examples, Kurt, there was also a city engineer, who was a really good city engineer, but he ended up, you know, being replaced, and then he bumped back. His wife had cancer, he finished out his years with the city in a perfectly responsible mid-management position. So, you know, I found out it was used only a handful of times, and when it did, it causes a little problem because you have to figure out what to do with the people that bump back, but really not that bad, considering, I think, the benefit to the city of, you know, encouraging that talent in this political environment to take that risk and to move forward. So, I would just kind of like to lay that on the table, that maybe we might consider it going, you know, for the full group. And I understand what you're saying about the uniqueness of police and fire, but I would just add, when it was, you know, across the board, it was rarely used, and when it did, it seemed to work out just fine.
All right, other discussion, councillors, on this? Councillor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, this makes complete sense. I'm glad it's being brought forward. I think it's been talked about quite a bit in the past. If I could maybe ask one of you two, I mean, what was the argument or reasoning against this before? Apparently, it was brought up a couple of years ago, did you just say, and it was voted down? Councillor Kylie or Sale?
Well, it's hard for me to speak because I was on the other side of the item there, so I quite frankly didn't pay attention to their side of the argument. No, actually, I think they thought that if they were good enough for the position, they should be willing to put everything on the line, and basically, that was the argument. But I do agree that there are a lot of, it may, and it very rarely did you have somebody actually bump back. But when it, when it did happen, I think the benefits of attracting those good and qualified individuals that were earlier in the middle of their career far outweighed any disadvantages that that created.
Yeah, well, I think it's just like you say, you've got some people that might not want to go for a particular position because they think, well, you know, maybe it's a position that's open for a year or six months, or maybe there's a mayor on the way out and thinking, well, jeez, if I take it, I can't go back, and I just, I don't... Penalizing folks who are climbing a ladder or have a little bit of ambition to go that direction doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense, in my view. But anyway, thanks for bringing it up, I appreciate it.
All right, councillor Kylie?
I would just, again, Chief Burns and Chief Goodroad are both here, and if any of you have anything to add, I'd welcome you to come forward, or if any of you have any questions for them, I would welcome you to ask them to come forward.
All right, thank you, councillor. Any questions for the chiefs, while we got them both here?
Thanks for sticking around.
Yeah. All right, let's go ahead and take a vote on this, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item thirty-nine.
Item thirty-nine, a resolution creating tax incremental district number twenty-three, city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor and councillors. Jeff Eckhoff, Planning and Development Services. We are here, oh, wait, Dustin, get up there. Thanks, Dustin. We're here tonight asking for approval of the creation of TIF district for TIF number twenty-three, which is Foundation Park North. The developer in this case, and we've seen TIFs come before with private developers, in this case, it'll be our partners at the Sioux Falls Development Foundation who own the development parks. This is a departure from the way often when we bring TIFs together, to you almost every time, we bring, there's two steps, there's the creation of the district or the boundaries, where the increment will be gathered and where the improvements will happen, and then there's the plan. And we often work with the developer and bring those to you at the same time. Tonight, we're just forwarding the creation of the district, and the reason for this is we're trying to be proactive. There's an increased amount of activity and interest in Foundation Park North in particular. There's interest in the larger parcels up there, and there's five hundred and some acres that need to be developed to finish off Foundation Park North. We think this is a unique opportunity to be proactive and get ahead of that, and what we want to do is get the district created so as construction would begin, we could capture all the increment and be able to use those for further improvements down the road. The foundation has a long history of success with shovel-ready sites, and if you think about your own, your own, if you move to town and there's a cornfield that's going to be housing lots someday, and there's a development that has lots already lined up with all the infrastructure, and your choice becomes pretty easy. It's the same with industrial and commercial prospects, and so for the last almost fifty years, the Development Foundation has created parks one through eight that you see on this map. Those parks cover over thirteen hundred acres of land, home to a hundred and thirty businesses that are, have created almost, pardon me, over twelve thousand jobs. So, I think we've got a proven product, land development, shovel-ready sites, creates economic opportunity and growth in our area. Foundation Park is that next step in that, in that process. Just to give you some orientation to the site that we're looking at, Foundation Park North, if you look at that kind of diagonal line on the right-hand side, that larger building right below it, that's wind chill. The yellow line represents the boundaries of the district, which is really the un, not all of its undeveloped, it's all not built on. So, anything that would come into that would be part of the increment, which will help pay for the improvements. The intent is create the increment to put in the improvements to Foundation Park North. If you look at that railroad track that runs from the northwest to southeast through there, improvements would pretty much occur on the north side of that, and that's all undeveloped land. So, we're talking about five hundred and some acres of grading, water, sewer, drainage, all the things you need to be shovel-ready. So, it's a large number, and it gives an opportunity for the Development Foundation to be aggressive and be prepared and be very proactive. It's a unique opportunity because of the time that we're in. Whenever the economic times are tough, it seems like South Dakota does well because the bottom line matters more to these companies. We hear it from the governor, we hear it from G O E D, and we certainly hear it from the Development Foundation folks, the increased amount of interest that's going on, is doing business in South Dakota right now, and we feel this is a way to take advantage of that Just as a reminder for TIF eligibility, there's two things that have to be in the resolution. It has to be either a blighted parcel, or it has to be, it has to stimulate and develop the general economic welfare of the state through promotion and advancement of industrial, commercial, manufacturing, agriculture, and natural resources. This is an established industrial park, all the land around it is zoned, I too, it'll obviously be a commercial or create, add to the economy. On September second, this went before Planning Commission, with further, they look at it with regards to land use, and the two things they looked at primarily is, did it fit the shapes Sioux Falls zoning ordinance, and did it fit our twenty-forty comprehensive plan, which in both cases it did. Couple other things to note about the creation of the district, and again, we're just creating, asking to create the district, we're not going forward with the TIF plan. At this point, it does not obligate or encumber the city or the Development Foundation to any other development, any other expenditures, and no increment will come from this site until some project is closed and the building begins, and so the increment came again. At that time, we'll come back to you, and then the process will look very traditional. We will have to go through Planning Commission. We always have an informational meeting with county. While we've been asked to go, this is in the Tri-Valley School District, Dustin has contacted all tax entities. They've asked us at that time to come and present to the school board. There'll be a full informational meeting to this body, and then there'll be a first and second reading for the development agreement in the actual TIF plan. At that point, we'll have numbers and projections, we'll show the eligible costs and those type of things, and that'll look very familiar to the TIF plans that we brought through to you before. At this point, the Planning Commission has approved it, staff is recommending approval of the creation of this district. Dean Dezek and Mike Gray are here from the Development Foundation. If you have any questions of them with regards to prospects or activity or anything going on in Foundation Park or the other development parks they have as well. With that, we're open for questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Deborah Owen, Director of Public Policy for the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. We rise in support of this resolution and think it's a great project for our city. When it comes to development incentives, many of you know, South Dakota has very few tools in our tool belt to help with our development here in our state. Sioux Falls, the city of Sioux Falls, has a history of being very judicious with your TIF districts, and so we urge your support. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deborah. Anyone else here to speak on this topic? Councillors, do you have questions for Jeff or for the Development Foundation? Councillor Knightzert?
A few. First of all, I should know this, is this Sioux Falls School District, or is this Tri-Valley?
Tri-Valley.
Okay, so you would be meeting with?
Yes.
Them when the time comes of the particulars?
So, when the notice went for the Planning Commission, we had to notify all the taxing entities, and so we've contacted them both in writing, and Dustin talked to them personally, and that's when they issued the invitation, they want us to come up and visit with the school board. The superintendent was in favor, he just wanted us to come up and explain it to the school board.
As it relates to things like the timeline, you would assume that the TIF district will fully fund and all that, that's all would come in the second phase?
So, it'll depend on the size of the projects that come in. Obviously, the larger the building, the larger the increment, the more they'll be able to do. So, there'll be probably phases done to it as that's land develops. We'll put the plan together, but they'll probably end up funding it in phases. There's detail we're working on with that right now, and we'll have those numbers when we come back to you with the plan and as we develop this.
And you have to, obviously, we have to get to the details, but in the broad strokes, essentially, I take it the Development Foundation would be the one that would be able to take draws from the, they'd somehow submit eligible receipts or whatever, and then...
Right, they would act just like a private developer does, and then they would submit, and then we would reimburse them. Cost, right?
And then we would set forth all of the things that are eligible, and that's all going to come in the next step.
And our office, in particular, Dustin certifies the cost and makes sure they meet that they are eligible based on the plan and within state law.
And then maybe the last question, traditionally, the Development Foundation or whoever's developing, they'd have to put, they have to do all this grading and all of this, and obviously, that's going to go into the price of the lot, essentially. So, they're going to have to sell it for a higher price. With this, theoretically, they're going to be getting some dollars, windfall dollars, however we want to put it, whatever. They're going to get some dollars, and they're going to be able to do all of this and get it shovel-ready. Is that going to create the opportunity where they will have the option, at least, if there's a big tenant or something, where we now have something else where we now can be more competitive? Because now we could, since, you know, they don't necessarily have to pass on cost, that we might have some way in which we could say, here's a shovel-ready site, and it's going to be much less than it would normally be, and that's one of the drivers of this?
Yeah, that's really good insight. As Deborah was saying, in South Dakota, we have very few tools that we offer from an economic development, and in the industrial development game, and I was in it for sixteen years, it's all about incentives, it's all about opportunities, it's about upfront costs, it's about getting that capex cost down. And so, we have the TIF, and what the intent is, really what most communities end up bargaining with is land price. And if you've got all these other sunk costs in it, it makes us not competitive, and so this is the entire idea, that we get those land costs down to where they'll be competitive with other sites, and because, again, we have so few tools to use in that endeavor.
Okay, thanks.
Spot on.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other questions for Jeff, council? All right, look for a motion on this item?
Move to approve. Brecky?
Second. Knightzert?
All right, motion by councillor Brecky, seconded by councillor Knightzert to approve item thirty-nine. Any discussion, council? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Council, any new business tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Starr first, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point a personal privilege, if I could, please. Earlier today was a big event in the Starr household. We became new parents. We were able to finalize the adoption for my daughter that's been with us for the last three and a half years, so she officially gets to be called a Starr and part of the Starr family. So, thank you for those that have reached out in the past, and I totally encourage the looking, people looking at foster care and adoption as a way to start, build, and add to their family over the years. So, thank you all for all the kind words in the past, and I just wanted to share that with everyone tonight.
Wow, congratulations, that's great.
Thank you.
Councillor Brecky?